Hello, everyone. This is Paige Nuez with retsyndrome.org. I'm so happy to have you here with us today for our town hall with Children's Hospital Colorado and our wonderful folks in Colorado and surrounding states. Thanks for being with us on a Saturday morning. You know, it's been a while since we've been able to be together in person, and we thought it would be really timely and helpful if we came together to talk about how things are progressing at the clinic, as well as with research, as well as what new things are happening with retsyndrome.org and the Rocky Mountain Ret Association. We want to help you reconnect and know that, you know, the world is still turning. Things are still happening, especially as we are at the intersection of Rett syndrome and a global pandemic and economic issues and social issues and a big election year. So many things going on that we wanted to tell you all the positive things that are happening with Rett. So thanks for being with us. If this is your first time using GoToWebinar, let me give you just a few housekeeping issues. You are automatically muted and your webcams are off. So if you're in your pajamas, on your couch with lots of noise at home, don't worry about it. It's not interfering with the broadcast in any way. We did receive your questions that you submitted at the time of registration, and Dr. Benke and I and Heidi will be talking about those throughout our talk. If you have questions that come up that weren't pre-submitted, go ahead and type them into the chat function, and we'll get to them at the end of our slides. If the GoToWebinar dashboard is bothering you, you can drag and bring it down to the corner of your screen, and that way you can see the full slides. Also, today's presentation is being recorded, so if there are any other families that you know are interested in this information but couldn't be with us today, go ahead and share the link. When you receive it, you'll get it by email in a day or two. Or if you're a pediatrician, or a general GP, or any other therapists, or anyone on your care team, case managers might be needing this information, please share the link. Okay, so before we get started today, I wanted to share the agenda, just so you know. Again, we're gonna hear from Dr. Benke about what's going on at the clinic. We're gonna get some updates about retsyndrome.org, and we're gonna hear from the Rocky Mountain Ret Association, and then we'll take questions at the end. Okay, before Dr. Benke gets going with us, though, I would like to bring Heidi onto the screen. So Heidi, if you want to go ahead and turn on your webcam. She is on your screen wrap, and you might know her from Rocky Mountain Ret Association. But Heidi was gonna share just a little bit about her family and some inspiring things about her journey. So Heidi, welcome. Please tell us about her family. And I'm gonna turn my webcam off so we can all focus on you.
Oh, lovely. All right, well, hello, everybody. My name's Heidi, and as you can see in the picture, that is our daughter Ellie. She has Rett syndrome, and she will be 12 on October 22, which is still blowing me away. And then we have a six-year-old son Reese, who is in the picture there, too. I don't know if you can still see the picture. And I have a short amount of time to talk. I will talk forever, and I always get cut off. So if you know me, you know that's the case, so I have to be quick. But basically, I, first of all, wanted to say I'm so excited to be doing all I can for Rocky Mountain Ret and retsyndrome.org. One of my big things is to help families. I had some really great people help me when we first got diagnosed. So I want to do that for other people, too. I think it's really important that we all help each other, especially through this. It's crazy. So quick background on Ellie. She was diagnosed when she was seven years old, so it was a pretty late diagnosis. I would like to also say I was the only one that thought she had Rett syndrome. Nobody else did. Her pediatrician that had known her since we first brought her home from the hospital said absolutely no, did she have it? Neurologist said absolutely no, did she have it? Specialists at other hospitals, I mean, we saw everybody. Nobody said she had Rett. Finally, I convinced our pediatrician to get the test done, and it came back that she had Rett syndrome. So for me, one of the things that, you know, is a little different. I mean, everyone has their own journey. Everyone has their own way they felt when they were diagnosed. I was actually relieved because I felt like now I can focus. Now I know what she has, because for so long, we had no clue. And everybody had a different opinion. Of course, she got the autism diagnosis. She got, you know, just the PPND. She got, maybe she's delayed because she was a super preemie. She was born at 29 weeks. So they were always focusing on all this other stuff and not focusing on Rett because she didn't have all the, you know, every symptom that a lot of girls have. She's developed a lot of them now as she's gotten older, but she's still pretty amazing. And one of the reasons we're in Colorado is for Dr. Benke and for the Rett clinic here. So after Ellie was diagnosed, she, we got the diagnosis at the beginning of January in 2016 or 17. See, that's how much, I don't even remember, but it was about five years ago. And we went to see a specialist in Portland, and that was the first time we'd actually seen other girls with Rett syndrome at the Rett clinic there. We actually got to talk to somebody that didn't tell us we were crazy and then actually told us, oh, yeah, she has Rett, and here's what you can do. And so that was a huge relief. And then we were like, well, we need more. We need to know more. So we kind of started researching, and Denver was pretty close to us. And so we decided to fly out, and Tristan got us in at the clinic. And we came and we met everybody. And I remember Benke saying, we'd love to have Ellie. We'd love to work with Ellie. And like, pretty much on the spot, my husband said, okay, we're moving to Colorado. And I was like, no, 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 we're not moving to Colorado. But low and behold, two years later, here we are. And it's the best thing we ever did for Ellie. She went from people not having a clue of what was going on with her to now we have incredible therapists. We have an amazing doctor. We have a great pediatrician. We have a fabulous team for her. And she's doing great. And the schools are great here. And there's sunshine, because we moved from Seattle, where I lived my entire life. And so now I'm realizing I have to use a lot more moisturizer on my skin, and I'm aging rapidly, but other than that, it's fine. But we love it here, and we're so, so, so happy to have all these services for Ellie. So that's pretty much our story. She's doing great. If you want to know more, I'll be happy to tell you more, because I love to talk about her and spread the word about Rett. So that's kind of where we are now. So it's, things are really good, and we're really happy to be here. And I'm really happy to be part of both of these organizations and be there for you guys. If you have any questions or need anything from me, I'll do whatever you need. I'm totally here for you. So that's it.
Great. Thanks so much, Heidi. Oh, my gosh, it's so wonderful to see your lovely, smiling face and meet your beautiful family. And thank you for sharing such a personal story and so positive. And I'm glad that, I'm glad, especially for Ellie, that she's getting all that sunshine, because we know how good vitamin D is for our calcium and bone growth in our girls. So thanks for sharing that, that great point, too. Okay, so I'm gonna welcome you back in a little bit. And right now, what I'd like to do is invite Dr. Benke to come on and let us know what's going on at the clinic in terms of reopening. And good morning.
Hey, let me figure out how to share my screen.
Yeah, sure, take a moment. See your email?
No, we don't want to see that. Can you go back to?
There you go.
We want, no, not that screen. We want to see.
That's okay now.
Can you see the slides yet?
Nope.
Okay.
Go back to where you were. Scroll over PowerPoint there.
Oh, I see what you're seeing.
There we go. If you go to slideshow, we should be able to get a better view of the slide.
Right, now can you see the slides?
We can, and if you, well.
No, are you? Okay.
Go back to view, and then I think if you.
There's a button that swaps slides, but I don't know where it is.
Yeah. It's okay. Yeah, go back to your display, the view you were at, and I'll remind you if you.
It's this one.
That one, right there. Go to display settings, and there we go.
Now you can see it. Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Wouldn't be a conference without some technical difficulties.
No. And, okay, so now we're, you're on the slide that says Rett Clinic at Children's Hospital Colorado?
We sure are.
Great, perfect. Hello, everybody. My name is Dr. Tim Benke. I'm medical director for the Rett Clinic at Children's Hospital Colorado. I'm wearing my risers for Rett, Rocky Mountain Red Association swag. Got the jacket on here, too. See, just so you know what the deal is. So thanks very much, Paige, and Jessica, and Ursula, and Heidi, for helping putting this together so we can bring you up to date on some things. And I hope that I get to all of your questions today. Of course, this is a team, and we'll tell you more about the team. But my main team member for the clinic is Tristan Dinkwell. She's our Rett clinic coordinator extraordinaire, and this whole dealio wouldn't exist without her efforts. So these are my disclosures, just so you know that there's a lot of things that go towards allowing me to do what I do. So here's what we're gonna talk about today. We're gonna talk about COVID-19. Then we're gonna talk about our clinic for Rett CDKL5 and FOXG1 at Children's Hospital Colorado. Then I'll give you an update with, not an update, but just a little tutorial, what I call Clinical Trials 101. Then I'll give you an update on our clinical trials. First, saying how COVID-19 has impacted our clinical trials. Then talk about our trials in Rett CDKL5 Disorder, FOXG1, Meckp2 Duplication Syndrome. So COVID-19. I've been trying to keep my ear to the ground, also known as Facebook, to know if people have had COVID-19 in our community. There have really, there's nothing in the literature to report, say what's going on. But as far as I know, there's been nobody hospitalized due to COVID-19 in our communities. If you know of anything, let me know. I think that that's very useful. With regards to return to school and therapies, this has been a big issue with a lot of phone calls from families. But this is in balance with safety. And the American Academy of Pediatrics has some suggestions in a link here on their website. But essentially, what I would like to summarize this as saying is that frequent hand washing and mask wearing by all, that includes our women and girls and boys, protects the entire community. Vaccines, flu, and COVID, when they're available, should be given when they're available. And we can talk more about that, because I know that there's some, a lot of different questions about what that means. But I know that a lot of our families have really had a hard time with not having access to therapies during COVID-19, and it's not been a good thing. And as I say to a lot of people before, I hate COVID. I really do. I hate this. So the other important thing is to remember is if your child needs medical attention, get it. Don't be afraid to go to the hospital. Our hospitals are doing everything possible in terms of what a business should be doing. We're not a business, we're a hospital. But what we should be doing in order to maintain a safe place to go. We have, we're all screened when we come in. We all wear masks. We all wear face shields. If anybody's sick, they're screened at the door, and they're tested. We get our results back in two hours. If anybody is, that you're gonna see in the hospital is safe, we are gonna be safe for you to see. So if your child needs medical attention, don't ignore that and get it. Look for updates, as I've blogged about this on the retsyndrome.org and the Rocky Mountain Red Association websites. So let's talk about the Rett Clinic at Children's Hospital Colorado. So we've been doing this since 2011. This is an all-ages, multidisciplinary, one-stop shop. It's for Rett and MECKP2-related CDKL5 Disorder and FOXG1 Disorder. It's for new diagnoses, old diagnoses, old people with new diagnoses, et cetera, and for follow-ups. And we're, we are here to assist your providers in providing Rett-specific care. We're not here to take care necessarily, take over your care, but we're here for you. We're gonna ask things like, are you getting your annual ECG, your heart tests, and vitamin D levels checked? There's a long list of things that we're trying to do. This is nurse-coordinator-driven by Tristan, and it's funded by your generosity, the Rocky Mountain Red Association and the International Foundation for CDKL5 Research. So live visits restarted in August 2020. Prior to that, we were doing telehealth through the worst of the pandemic. Telehealth is still available as needed. We are the second Wednesday of every month. Space is limited as to how many patients we can see. But if you have questions, please get in touch with Tristan through Rett Clinic at childrenscolarado.org. But also, there's a lot of questions. If we're not seeing you, why not? Let us know. We're here for you. And what do you need? Let us know. So this is the list of the team. It's 18 members representing individual professions and disciplines. I won't go through and read everybody's name, but we're a good team of people. What we do is we meet the Wednesday before clinic, and we go over and talk about everybody before we see you. All right, let's talk about clinical trials. Here we are. And this is what we've all been waiting for, some treatment that's specific to Rett, CDKL5, FOXG1, MECKP2 Duplication Syndrome. Well, how we have to get there is research through the clinical trial process. And it's important to know that clinical trials, this is research, it's not treatment. A successful trial is hopefully gonna lead to FDA approval and then availability of treatment, and that's ideally how it works. If you have questions about this, do what you're doing. Ask questions, get informed, enroll in the trials, be patient. It is a process, and just bear with us as we go through it. So clinical trial basics. This is the 101 slides. So what is a clinical study? And what is a clinical trial? So this is all, both of these are a process by which subjects and caregivers consent or resent to participate in a defined study designed to produce information that can be used to understand, or study, or help. That is a trial, the population as a whole. The data is peer-reviewed and published to advance the knowledge in effective and safe treatments of the disease. Trials are interventions, whereas studies are studies. And this is voluntary. You do not have to participate in a clinical trial unless you want to participate. Participating involves consent. You sign something that says that you want to do this. In rare cases, it's something that you opt out of versus opt in, but you can always withdraw at any time. This is a voluntary thing. A review board approves trials before any subjects are contacted or enrolled. International rules, standards, and ethics are applied. And that's, that's what's important here, is that these review boards want to ensure that safety is paramount in all aspects of the trial. Clinical trials comes in phases. Phase one is typically testing healthy volunteers with multiple doses. It may be in patients with an advanced stage of a disease or diseases with no known treatments. Phase two is testing on patients for efficacy and safety. And phase three is confirmatory. It's testing on patients for efficacy, effectiveness, and safety. And the FDA typically will approve for use after phase three. Clinical trial types. So these are some of the definitions that you need to know about when we talk about clinical trial types. So placebo control, that means a placebo, also known as a sugar pill, is used to make sure that the effects are real. And this is important, because patients with epilepsy, even epilepsy, can see a 25% reduction in seizures with a placebo. Randomized, so who gets placebo or drug is a flip of the coin. Double-blind, this means that the study subjects and the local study personnel, such as myself, do not know who is getting the drug. You can ask, we do not know. We really do not. Open label means everybody knows everybody's getting the drug. Crossover means those that were getting the drug then get a placebo, or those that were getting a placebo then get drug. So it's usually randomized and double-blind, too. Extension, this is access to the drug after the trial ends, and it's usually an open-label continuation of the trial, where we're still collecting data. What are some other things that you need to know? So the gold standard that the FDA looks at when they're trying to decide if a drug is ready and safe is a randomized, double-blind, placebo-controlled trial. The screening visit, this is the first visit of a trial to make sure that the subject meets the inclusion and exclusion criteria. Inclusion and exclusion criteria, these are things like age, weight, disease specifics, other medication use, recent trial experiences, et cetera. Duration, this is the duration of treatment during the trial. Study visits, these are specifically timed for the trial to get good data. They're not that flexible. It's usually plus or minus a day as to when their time, not weeks, and they're not optional. This is an issue, because it means it's not convenient always for you to participate. You're signing up because you decide that you're gonna make that sacrifice to do the trial and sacrifice the convenience. The study coordinator works with the families to try to fit it into their schedule, and they happen over the duration of the trial. We've tried to be family-friendly, make considerations for that as much as possible. A lot of these, these are set up for the trial. They're not things that necessarily can be changed, certainly on an individual basis. We have to follow the rules of the trial. Endpoints and outcomes, these are the measurables to determine safety and efficacy. Clean data, so this has to do with the inclusion and exclusion criteria. We can't bend the rules. They're not something that we can alter in any way. We need to be sure that things are safe and effective. And again, this is research, not treatment. But post-approval, this should be available to all. And this has, one of the questions that comes up is, is where are males in all of these trials? And this is something that, while we can try to influence the companies to do, it's something that they decide based on how many patients that they think that they can have a trial to get clean data for that trial. And that's one of those issues. Good data. Some of the issues are, it's really important to have the same caregiver present at all of the study visits to ensure that we're getting consistent data. Another issue is travel issues, and this came up with some of the questions, is that your travel to the trial should not interfere with you obtaining your regular therapies that you're getting, such as physical and speech and occupational therapy. Because if you're in the trial and you're not getting the things that you usually get, then suddenly you're different to how you were before you were in the trial. So that's an issue with patients and having to travel for trials. We are open, and there are some options we'll get to later for people who travel with regards to assistance with travel costs. That's through Rettland. But as I said, we want good data. Clinical trials, where do you get information on this? Do you get it from Facebook? Well, Facebook posts have contaminated, contaminated trial data in the past and interfered with the ability for the trial to make an effective estimate on safety and efficacy. So no, Facebook is not the answer. Some trials even prevent you from being on Facebook during a trial. Email, internet, blogs, me? Well, I'm not gonna endorse any particular trial. I'm gonna tell you about them, but I want you to make the decision about ones that you're gonna participate in. Trust, but verify. The only real sources are clinicaltrials.gov or sourced from there, as I'm presenting to you today, or the company website, or the consent form for the study, or the study investigators can tell you more about trials after they've been IRB-approved. Clinical trials in COVID-19. Well, everything came to a screeching halt and was put on hold in March 2020. For some trials, telehealth options were put in place where possible. But because that was a new thing and wasn't originally in the trial protocol, the trial protocols had to be amended and approved before we could do that. So with COVID, we've had a phased reopening at Children's Hospital Colorado. And essentially, what that meant is they slowly reopened things, and trials were put in different categories. And at different times, those categories of trials were allowed to restart. In the meantime, all of our trial protocols have been amended, and our reopening has been pending approvals of those amendments. Those amendments included things like allowing telehealth. Those amendments included things like if you were in the trial and got bumped because of COVID-19, how we were going to bring you back into the trial. And that's been the big deal and the primary delay in getting restarted. So the Natural History Study, this is live and in telehealth, and this is ongoing. The ketamine study is active and live. The trophinitide study, it should restart any week now, and it's gonna be mostly live with maybe a few options for telehealth. The Greenwich Pharmaceuticals CBD Trial, again, we're hoping this starts any week now, and it's gonna also be mostly live with maybe a few options for telehealth. So the NIH-funded Natural History Study. So this is an NIH-funded Natural History of Rett and Rett-related disorders that's followed over 1,000 patients through 2013. This is for MECKP2, CDKL5, and FOXG1 to look at genotype, phenotype, epilepsy, GI issues, scoliosis, life expectancy, and to establish published standards. So we have funding through July of 2021. We have these different numbers that we use to refer to parent, different protocols. But basically, there's 5211, which is the main protocol, and 5212, which is our biomarkers protocol. Our study visits occur separately from regular Rett clinic. Biomarker, by the way, is an objective measure of disease severity or predictive of the disease progression or response to treatment. So these are our participating institutions and investigators. Dr. Percy at UAB is the chair, and Jeff Newell at Vanderbilt is the study administrator and co-PI. And this is the list of all of us who are the site PIs. 5211, our current enrollment, it's all ages and through, from 2013 to September 2020. There are 792 with our MECKP2-positive, 72 subjects with MECKP2 duplication, 62 with FOXG1, 70 with CDKL5. So you're under 10 years of age. We want to see you annually, 10 to 20, every other year, over 20 years, every four years. And our challenge has been to see some of our older and sicker patients, just because it's hard to travel. So it makes telehealth a nice thing for some of those patients. 5212, this is our biomarker trial. We've enrolled 164 patients, 140 have been analyzed. And basically, what we know so far, and we have a paper submitted that is that these biomarkers are different, as you'd expect, between the groups and compared controls. But we're trying to figure out if this is something that can be used as a biomarker in clinical trials. So what are our deliverables? So we've had published over 50 papers on Rett, CDKL5, MECKP2 Duplication Syndrome, and FOXG1. Recently, we've had a paper on MECKP2 males, MECKP2 Duplication Syndrome, a couple of papers on CDKL5 Disorder. And now I'm proud to say we finally got the healthcare supervision guidelines published. There's a link there, and there's also gonna be a downloadable version on the retsyndrome.org website. And we can talk about that more if you have questions about it. Now, we've got a planned, in-process deliverable, some papers on disorder comparisons, biomarkers, and disorder comparisons through metabolomics. So let's talk about the different clinical trials. So first, we're gonna talk about is ketamine. This is a randomized, double-blind, placebo-controlled crossover study to assess the safety, tolerability, and efficacy of oral ketamine for patients with Rett syndrome. So now that you've had the clinical trials 101, you know what each one of those terms stands for. So this is a phase-two trial. There's five days of drug or placebo, and you would cross over. Then there's a washout, and then five days of drug or placebo, and then washout. Takes total about eight to 10 weeks total. This is for patients that are six to 12 years of age, females before periods have started with typical and atypical Rett syndrome. The sponsor is Rett Syndrome Research Trust. Primary endpoints are safety. Secondary are clinical global impression of severity improvement, MBA, and the RSBQ. The goal is to get 48 subjects. Again, you can see clinicaltrials.gov. We're one of the sites for the site list. And there's also a website here as well. The next is the Greenwich Pharmaceuticals CBD Trial. So this is a randomized, double-blind, placebo-controlled trial to investigate the efficacy and safety of cannabidiol oral solution. And the fancy word for it is GWP, number, 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 in patients with Rett syndrome. It's, this is also a drug that's been approved for other disorders in epilepsy called Epidiolex. uh, other disorders in epilepsy called Epidiolex, and it's a phase three trial. It's double-blind placebo-controlled, 24 weeks with a six-month open label extension. The sponsor is Greenwich Pharmaceuticals. It's for two to 18 years of age, over nine kilograms with typical and atypical Rhet. Our primary endpoints are the RSBQ and the clinical global impression of improvement. Our goal is 252 subjects. You can see clinicaltrials.gov for the site list. Uh, it has been changing and we are one of those sites, and there's the screening website there below. Next study to talk about is the trophinitides trial. So this is the study of trophinitide for the treatment of girls and women with Rhet syndrome, also called lavender. So it's trophinitide is the drug, it's phase three trial. It's double-blind placebo-controlled with 12 weeks of treatment. The sponsor is Acadia Pharmaceuticals. It's for females, five to 20 years of age, weighing more than 12 kilograms with typical Rhet syndrome. Primary endpoints are the RSBQ, the clinical global of impression improvement. Our goal is 148 subjects. You can see clinicaltrials.gov for the site list, and it is, uh, has been changing too. Why? And we are a site for this study. And there's the screening uh, website there. Also about trophinitide, this is from the company website. The lavender phase three study will be followed by lilac, a 40-week open-label extension study. All participants completing the 12-week lavender study may be eligible to enroll in lilac study in which all study participants will receive trophinitide and follow to evaluate long-term tolerability and safety of the drug. Trophinitide has been granted fast-track status, orphan drug designation for Rhet syndrome in the US, and orphan drug designation for Rhet syndrome in Europe. Uh, the next trial to talk about is Anavex. This is a double-blind randomized placebo-controlled dose-tritration study of Anavex in patients with Rhet syndrome. That's a phase two, double-blind placebo-controlled trial with seven weeks of treatment with 12 weeks of open-label extension. Sponsor was Anavex. This was for our older women, 18 plus with typical Rhet syndrome. Now, the primary endpoints were safety pharmacokinetics. Secondary were the uh, clinical global impression of improvement and the RSBQ. Uh, their goal was 20-plus subjects, and that list was on clinicaltrials.gov. Uh, we were not a site for this trial, but according to the company website, they've completed um, the trial and their results are pending. And there's a uh, on the website for the the company, you can see that there. And the screening website is there, but this, because the study is completed, they will not be recruiting any any further patients as far as I know. The next one to talk about is cerisatam. So this was a randomized double-blind placebo-controlled six-month study to evaluate the efficacy, safety, and tolerability of cerisatam in patients with Rhet syndrome with respiratory symptoms. The trial is active, but it's not recruiting. They did not meet their primary endpoints, and so that trial was closed and there is a web link to learn more about that. So that was disappointing that that it didn't work, but that's something that that sometimes happens. Now, I know everybody wants to know about gene therapy. So uh, this is from the Evaxis Novartis press release, which was on the RhetSyndrome.org website. And uh, I know that the question is, is when is this going to get started? But but it is not that date, and those announcements have not been made yet, and um, so, and when they are, you'll hopefully know through the Rhet Syndrome dot org or other websites. For um, CDK05 deficiency disorder, there's been a trial with a drug called Ganaxolon. This is a study of adjuptive Ganaxolon treatment in children and young adults with CDK05 deficiency disorder. It was called the Marigold Study. Uh, it was a phase three trial, and it's now closed. Um, but there have been results that look promising, and these are posted on the company website. Uh, they're of course now waiting for the FDA to make a decision on this. This was a phase three trial. It was a double-blind placebo-controlled uh, trial, and the primary endpoint was reduction in seizures. And it was for 100 persistent participants aged two to 21 years of age, and we were a site for this trial. Uh, the next study is in CDK05 disorder, which was the TAC935 trial. This is a multi-center, open-label pilot study of TAC935 and participants with 15Q duplication syndrome uh, or CDK05 uh, deficiency disorder. Uh, TAC935 is a 24 cholesterol hydroxylase inhibitor, which reduces the expression of certain type of uh, ion channel receptor called NMDA receptors. It was a phase two trial sponsored by Takeda and Open Therapeutics. It was an open-label trial. Uh, the primary endpoint was reduction in seizures. Uh, their goal was 30 participants. 15 with CDD aged two to 35 years of age, and there you can reach the um, more information on that trial there. Uh, we we are a site in this trial and uh, it is ongoing. Uh, the next thing to talk about is gene therapy for CDK05 disorder. And there are, there is a company called Ultragenics, which is very interested in this, and Ultragenics announced an exclusive license to develop gene therapy for CDK05 disorder, and this is from uh, their website. So how does all of this work? And this is one of the reasons why we and others have a Rhet clinic. So we know you. Uh, we will pre-screen and we'll call you if we if we think that you will qualify. If you want to know directly if you may qualify, then call and email your clinic. And we will get back to you. And a lot of these issues have to do with, you know, certainly during COVID, which we've been bugging um, our regulatory agencies and the companies on a weekly basis, trying to get this all put back in place. So we've been squeaky for you. Be squeaky to us, but to a point, we're doing our best. We're, we are endeavoring to get this this um, fandango started as soon as we possibly can. So um, there are going to be screening and baseline visits, and these usually add four weeks total or four four weeks to the total uh, trial time. And what we do is that that screening of those baseline visits, we're verifying if you qualify. And you may not. I might, I might think you do, but then when we sit you down and we go through all of the questions for the trial, uh, only then we'll be able to tell you if you if you pass the specifics. Uh, and this is all as we were talking about, this in order not to avoid, it's in order to avoid any bias in the study. And you know, the travel, uh, it may be part of the budget to support you. The the companies are trying to make it easy for patients to do this. Um, so just just ask and we will let you know if if there are some travel costs that can be part of the trial. Um, but there are also other resources as well to help with travel, and one of those is Rhetland.org. So being in a trial, here's the process just graphically. So there's a screening visit. And then there's a baseline visit, and at the baseline visit, they flip a coin. And you either get drug or you or on placebo, and then there's those clinical trial visits while you're on drug or placebo. Then there's the last clinical trial visit, and then it's a duck, then you're done. And then there's usually another visit after you've been off drug uh, as part of the clinical trial. So for some of the trials after that last clinical trial visit and after that little finish line there, uh, in two of the studies, the uh, trophinitide and the uh, GW-CBD study, there is an opalay, open-label extension that goes on after that finish line where there are further visits as part of that. So we talked about COVID-19, Rhet Clinic at Children's Colorado, clinical trials, and we do want you to enroll because we need you to do that. And I know that there are questions, and uh, you've got that web link there to our clinic. And so I think the next thing for me to do is to stop sharing my slides, and I can answer some of the questions that came up in the email before we go on. Should we do that, Paige?
Sorry, Tim. I was on mute. Yes.
No worries. Okay.
We can.
How do I unshare my screen now?
Um, I'll bring. Just pause. So if you uh.
Oh, very good. Thank you. So shall I try to answer some of those trial, those questions that um, that came up that I didn't cover, or do we want to go over this later?
Yeah, you know, let's do that while you're you're in the groove.
Okay. Um, here are some of the questions. Do you know of the device that helps kids walk? Um, there are a number of devices and studies and therapies that are out there. I'm not sure which one that you're referring to, um, but that's something that that we can talk about more. Um, next question, is there, are there any clinical trials for boys? The answer is unfortunately, no. Um, and we talked a little bit about that already. I think we talked about those two questions. Here's one. My daughter will have an EGD in October. Are there any tests such as an EKG or blood test which should be done before she has an EGD? Um, as part of our recommendations, which are now published, we think that everybody should have a yearly EKG. And if you haven't had one in a while, you're about to have a test, I think that that's good. But if you've had one in the last year, before you have your EGD, that should be good. Uh, what are treatments available to get our girls through puberty? I'm not sure what you mean by that question, but um, again, what a great question, and and we should talk about that more. Uh, shouldn't we be giving our daughters any particular supplements? Uh, elderberry zinc vitamin C during this time to boost their immune system? And the answer is, is well, there aren't any particular supplements that necessarily boost your immune system. So I would be careful and talk to your uh, primary care doctors about what what is being considered and to make sure that it's it's safe. Um, when do you anticipate resuming the clinics? And I think we talked about that. We're we're live, we're we're going. Uh, next question. Should our girls wear masks when in public? I think that if they can tolerate wearing a mask, they should wear it in public. And if they can't, then I think the question is, because we want to protect our girls, is do they really need to be out in public? And what are the, what are the ways that that we can do to keep them safe is what we need to talk about. Next question, have any girls gotten COVID? Uh, how have they been affected? We, I told you what I knew about that. Um, the next couple of questions are going to be addressed by Heidi about funding the clinic with no fundraisers. Um, events planned for 2021. Um, next question was, do you see scoliosis in the same frequency for ambulatory kids as those are wheelchair-bound? Uh, it's about the same. Will there be a ride for Rhet this year? I'll let Heidi talk about that. Next question was, how can I bring my daughter to US and participate on any available clinical trials? She's in the Philippines. Um, I don't know how to answer that. Uh, my concern is is that um, and this has been our challenge with with international patients is is that um, you have to travel for many of the visits, and traveling for those visits potentially can interfere with your therapies. And therapies need to continue as they have for you at home. So for somebody, we have patients that travel for our trials from Canada, but that's kind of been the extent of it, and and even that has been a real challenge. Next question was, uh, how early should one seek palliative care? I think if you ask the question, then the answer is now, and palliative care means different things uh, to different people, but essentially it's a, not a step backwards. I would like um, and Tristan is very invested in this because she's getting her master's in palliative care. Um, is a step forward in thinking about how do we want things to go forward? Is there, what are our goals and needs for our child, and how do we achieve those goals? It's it's, when you ask the palliative care question, that's the question that you're that you're asking. And it's never a bad time to ask that question. Uh, when will Evaxis file their IND with the FDA? Um, your guess is as good as mine. Where is gene therapy in the trials? And we talked about that one too. So we're hopeful that the gene therapy is something that's going to be uh, happening soon. So uh, if other questions come through in the chat, uh, we'll get to those as well. And I will now um, shift that back over to you, Paige.
Thanks, Dr. Banky. And gosh, it's great having you with us on a Saturday. Thank you so much for giving up your weekend. You already give up so much of your time, your families during the week. And we uh, we really enjoy you being with us, and thanks for wearing all of your um, your logoed items, and I'm going to talk a little bit now about um, I'm going to bring up my my screen share. I'm going to add on to some information that you shared and reinforce some of the messaging that you've given, and Heidi's going to join us again in a few minutes to give some additional information. I want to again encourage you to write in questions in the text field. We'll all come back on as presenters towards the end to answer any additional questions. And if you um, didn't get the answer you were looking for, for one of the questions that Dr. Banky just went through, please give us a little bit more information. Um, I'm really curious about the one about puberty. Uh, you know, I know what I commonly hear uh, when our kids enter puberty is that some of the hormonal changes can affect seizure frequency, for example, or they might have a growth spurt that um, might increase scoliosis. So sometimes we see more care needed with our orthopedics at that time. So if you can tell us a little bit more about specifically what you were asking for, we can hopefully talk about that a little bit later in the presentation. Okay? All right. So what's going on with RhetSyndrome.org? I have met many of you, and I've met your children and your families, and so many of you know, for those of you who are new to the community and don't know, I'm the Director of Family Empowerment with RhetSyndrome.org. I have a beautiful teenager with Rhet syndrome. I'm very proud to be with the organization that helped me at the time of our diagnosis, and it's now my time to give back to the community. We are an organization who is committed completely to accelerating research for a cure, for interventions, for treatments, and at the same time, be arm-linked with families and empowering you with the information and knowledge and connectivity that you need to get through this life that none of us really expected, right? Rhet syndrome is genetic, but it's not hereditary. The majority of us never heard of it prior to our child's diagnosis, and uh, and we learn at the time of symptom onset, all kinds of new terminology, vocabulary, and ways of living that we didn't expect. Because again, for the majority of us, we went home from the hospital with a child who had been given a clean bill of health, and symptoms creep up early in life. So it is incredibly important to us that we connect with you as families and that we are always thinking about what you need on your journey, whether it's in early childhood, tweens, teens, adults, um, and older age. As healthcare has improved, our women are aging, and we at RhetSyndrome.org now have uh, as many children over 18 living with Rhet syndrome as we do under the age of 18. And so that is really required a shift in our thinking into what do our adults need? And I know we have many families who are with us today who have adults, and we have families who are here as newly diagnosed. So we want you to be assured that we're thinking both of cure, of treatments, and we're thinking of you and what you need today. So when we talk about research, what are we talking about? You heard a lot from Dr. Banky. As an organization, we are involved with many discussions with uh, pharma and with industry who learn about Rhet syndrome, who think that they can help us, and we're at the table talking with them about what our lives are like. Um, what kinds of protocols they require for their studies, and we talk to them about how they can be modified to suit our lives so that we can have more engagement. We are investing in uh, research that will be medication, hopefully gene modification and neurohabilitative. I'm going to talk a little bit about this because we had a pretty exciting research outcome this year that we think will help you uh, greatly in your life today, um, in the field of neurohabilitation. So let me talk about that in a second. But we believe that we need to target every possible approach. Um, as Dr. Banky said, we had a trial that didn't reach the outcome that we had hoped, and that is the process of research. So we can't afford to leave any stone unturned, and we will not uh, leave any stone unturned. And we remain committed to creating solutions for today while we work to create a world without Rhet syndrome. And um, I want to, I want to qualify that term a little bit because we believe that our children are beautiful, unique, incredible individuals. So we honor who our children are, but we also honor that we would like for them to be symptom-free. So when we say create a world without Rhet syndrome, we want you to understand that that's what we mean uh, with that phrase. So this summer, while we, uh, many of us were working from home and we were pivoting. So this summer, while we, many of us were working from home and we were pivoting and how we were doing our work, we wanted to let you know that our work didn't stop. And we launched a program called Rett Research Ready. Because this is really where the intersection of research and family empowerment hits the ground, is getting families engaged in research and having you be Rett research ready. And Dr. Banky talked a lot about that, what it means to enroll in a trial, what it means to withdraw from a trial, what it means to hold steady with therapies, what it means to invest in trials, why do they take so long? We have created a Rett Research Ready program where you can hit our website and find answers to many of these questions. It's a strategic extension of our research investment. And in 2020, along one component of the Rett Research Ready program is, I think, something that you'll find of particular interest called My Rett Trial Finder. Dr. Banky talked about where you can find trusted resources about what trials are happening. The My Rett Trial Finder is a great tool where you can go in and you can input some information about your family and find out exactly what trials are out there that you might be eligible for or that your child may soon age into, or what you might want to kind of accelerate thinking about because your child might be getting ready to age out of. And this trial finder pulls directly from clinicaltrials.gov. And those are studies that are IRB approved, that are, that are legit. And we want this tool to be a way to accelerate you being able to find the information that is relevant for you and your family. If you'd like to join us on Tuesday, October 13th, Dr. Dominique Pichard, our Chief Science Officer, will be giving us an orientation around all of the clinical trials that are happening in the country for Rett syndrome and an orientation around My Rett Trial Finder. So hopefully you'll join us in October. Second part of our mission is empowering families. And. Every effort that comes from this part of our mission is because we are an organization of parents and friends of those diagnosed with Rett syndrome. And we have walked this journey, we know what's hard, we know what's not so hard, and we're committed to finding ways to help this journey be easier for you. It is come, our work comes from the fundraising and investment that you have given us, and we do everything we can as people, as volunteers, Heidi, as your state rep volunteer, to help with the empowerment side of the organization so that every dollar that's fundraised can go towards research as much as possible. So what have, what does that mean, empowering families? Well, we've published the Rett Syndrome Handbook, many know that as the bible of Rett syndrome. And it's really thick, it's very. Uh, big, and for many new families, they consider that handbook a little overwhelming because the handbook doesn't mean that your child is going to have every symptom that's discussed in the handbook, but it's a reference guide. So that if your child starts to have trouble with scoliosis or with reflux, or with apraxia, or with communication, that you have a place where you can go and you can learn the vocabulary, and you have a chapter that you can take to the therapist or the provider that you're working with to help you have a conversation about the Rett syndrome aspect of your child, and you get to be the expert of your child. So if you don't have a copy of the handbook, let us know, we'll be happy to send one to you at no charge. Our website is a continuously refreshed resource for you of all things Rett syndrome, whether it's research or family empowerment or just net general news updates. I'm going to take you real quick for a minute to into our website, not to give you a full. Let's see, here it comes. You know, we're not going to spend a lot of time going through the website, but I want to give you a quick navigation to, for example, where you can find information about Colorado. So we are a rare disease community. The information that we have is really come from the community. We curate it, we vet it, we put it onto our website so that, again, you can have a one stop shop place to find it. Our website really serves families across the country and many, many international families. And we're happy to partner with the Rocky Mountain Rett Association, who really gives you information that's relevant for your community. But we hope that you spend some time with our website and get familiar. Right up here, you'll see COVID-19 messaging, and that's been authored by Dr. Banky, who is our acting medical advisor for ret syndrome.org. And he has written these community updates throughout the time of COVID periodically from his position as an expert, but also by discussing with the other clinic directors across the country, a whole network. So you can know that this information isn't coming from just one source. It is collective wisdom from our Rett experts, as well as the CDC, the FDA, NIH, everywhere that we can, we can, you know, really synthesize information that you can feel good about sharing with your providers. So what I want to do, though, is show you specifically, for example, where you can find information for Colorado. And I know we have families from surrounding states as well. If you go to ret syndrome.org and you click on for families, you'll see quite a few sections of things that are about education and trials and living with Rett and being newly diagnosed and how you can connect with us. But if you go to resources specifically. And state resources. You'll find a US map and whatever state in the US you're living in, you can click on. And this one has a big, nice symbol here to indicate the Rett Clinic at Children's Hospital Colorado, which is an amazing resource and one of the best in class clinics that that I know of. But on this site, we have to add Heidi's name here because she's a new rep for your state. But you can scroll through and you can find information here that is about advocacy organizations and help with IEPs and help with waiver programs. All kinds of organizations that are there who aren't necessarily focused specifically on Rett syndrome, but they're there to help kids with, with disabilities and with families. So let's click back on my screen. Okay, so please spend time exploring. And again, if Colorado is not your state, you can go in and find any state. You can find right here at the bottom, I'm scrolling really fast. You know, we have links directly to Rocky Mountain Rett. Now, if you live in Colorado and you have a great resource that you don't see listed here, let Heidi know, we'll get it added. Again, we want this to be a place where you can find information that is been useful to other families living this journey and that you can trust our vetted resources. Okay, coming back, so we've talked about family connections, we've talked about state resources. We talked, IEP support is also in our website, referrals to clinic lists. You know, we think that we live where we are, but sometimes life, life changes and we move to other states. So as you move maybe from Colorado to Maine, we can help bridge you and introduce you to families as you move. We have social media to bring you constant updates as they hit the news flashes. Facebook, Twitter, ret syndrome.org, we have our own handles. And there's also the family forum, which is a great place to meet other families and talk about stuff. I hope you're signed up with our organization and get our emails. We have angel awareness cards, particularly for the newly diagnosed family, right? It's really hard to tell somebody what Rett syndrome is. We have angel awareness cards that you can order from us that have a nice short description about what Rett syndrome is. And you can put your child's picture on there and a little bit of information about your family. So as you are running into someone in the public or in the community who might be giving you those questioning looks, or they might know how they can, they want to, they can help, they want to get involved, you can just hand out those cards and it really accelerates the conversation, accelerates understanding, compassion, empathy, all of the things that we are seeking to have as a place in the world for our kids. And we want to help you be able to do that in your circle of friends and family with the angel awareness cards and also developing a personal page. So we have the infrastructure for you to develop a personal page where you can tell your family story. You can ask for people to give, it's a great alternative when it comes to birthdays and gift giving opportunities and October Awareness Month, which I'm going to talk about in a second. People want to help, they often don't know how, and if you just serve it up to them in an easy way, we all benefit. We talked a little bit about how family empowerment happened over the summer during shelter in place and during the process of reopening. In April and March and April, at the time when all of us really had our therapies closed down, we had our schools closed down, we pivoted and did a series of Facebook Live events with some of the best experts in the world around how to do things for your child at home to keep them engaged, to keep them moving, stretching, communicating, using things in our homes like couches and walls and pillows and props when we were maybe without the resources. That we were used to having in our clinics. So I wanted to take you here because these resources are still living on our website and they're very relevant, right? These were things that we needed prior to COVID, but it, COVID really drove us to get them uploaded onto our website, offer them as Facebook Lives, and you can access these recordings anytime. So if you want to get in the pool and the weather is still nice and have some fun with your kids, but you want to make it a therapeutic moment, here's a nice session from Brianna Zerwinski from Hopkins, who is an expert in Rett syndrome and aquatherapy. And she taught some great and showed some great videos of things you can do, communication, moves and stretches. The things that we can do as adults with a very small child change as our kids get older and they get bigger. And, you know, maybe they have scoliosis or maybe they have some contractures. So we did some Facebook Lives for what to do with your small child, with your tween, with your adult. These are still relevant, access them. And we were really happy that we were able to do that during COVID for everyone's benefit, but that these things will live on and have a useful life forevermore. As I talked about, we've had periodic updates from Dr. Banky, which we are grateful for. Thanks, Dr. Banky. And a big program commitment that we've made is to bring you monthly live webinars. These webinars, we build the calendar out six months to a year in advance, and all of the topics come from you, they are community sourced. The things that we see as themes and trends in the family forums that people are grappling with, that we hear from the clinic medical directors or frequently asked questions in clinics, we will bring you an expert speaker to do a deep dive on that particular topic. So today's town hall, not about epilepsy, it's not about scoliosis, it's not about nutrition and growth, but we have Rett Ed webinars that you can dial into live, ask your questions, just like we're doing today, this very same format. And we have a whole library of two years' worth of recordings that are on our website that you can go back and reference because something that may not be an issue for you today might become an issue tomorrow. And we want you to be able to access that and feel connected to the experts. They're really wonderful people who are committed to our kids. So next month, I mentioned in October, the Rett Ed is on clinical trials and an orientation on the My Trial Finder. In November, we're going to have an orientation on the communication guidelines, which I'm about to talk about. And in December, I'm really excited that we're going to have Tristan be our national speaker on CVI and vision in Rett syndrome. We hear a lot about that in CD Cal 5. We haven't talked about it so much in Rett syndrome, but it's really an important topic that we understand. And there are some findings coming to light and some data that we have to share with you in December. We're excited to hear from Tristan, especially for our children who are using eye gaze devices. This is something that, you know, we want you to be informed about. So visit ret syndrome.org for families, education. All of the Rett Ed webinars are no charge, thanks to a lot of our sponsors who are supporting the education programs. I'm just going to buzz through this because I want to move on to the communication guidelines. I happen to have a copy right here. This is the result of our investment in research. We know that our children communicate, we have a lot of people who believe our children communicate. We have a lot of people who don't understand that individuals who are primarily nonverbal really have great receptive language skills and can have communication. And that is the beauty of relationships, is to be able to communicate back and forth. And I know for our new families, it's really difficult for you to say, how am I going to understand what she wants, what makes her happy, what makes her sad? What does she want to do today? What does she want to wear? There are ways to, to have those rich conversations and communication. We want you to understand that, we want your educators, your therapists to understand how to bring that degree of communication to your child. And this particular study was five or six years in the process. It involved over 600 people worldwide who were both experts in Rett syndrome, who were SLPs who had never heard of Rett syndrome before, and families who had tried everything from low tech to mid tech to high tech. And what resulted is this, this really nice guideline to talk about how to do an assessment, how to do intervention, how to consider eye gaze or high tech. And this is available to you. So those are your research dollars that work, and this is what we mean by neurohabilitation, that when we get neurons firing together, they wire together, our children do better. And communication is such a critical, critical point that is very unique to Rett syndrome. The guideline also will educate others about what are some of the unique things about your child with Rett syndrome that get in the way of communication? If you're struggling with constipation all day long, that's going to impact your ability to communicate. And the guidelines really say, don't test someone on a day when they're not in a regulated state. And it helps orient the people that are doing the therapies with your kids to understand some of the complicating factors and not use them as excuses to discount communication, but how to get our girls and boys in a good place for communication. Anyway, going to get off my soapbox here because I feel very strongly about this one, and I'm glad we have this guideline. Some of the questions have been, how are we funding what we do? We at ret syndrome.org rely greatly on fundraising, and we are so happy that many of our fundraising programs have been able to be moved to a virtual environment this summer. And we are not at our regular levels, but, you know, Rett syndrome doesn't sleep. The commitment of our community is incredible, and our MRA is going to talk about some of their fundraisers shortly. But we hope you will, can tune in and learn and participate in our Rett Ride Across America. It's going to happen on October 3rd, and you can participate from wherever you are. If you want to do it from your Peloton, or you want to get your child on her adapted bike and tour around the block, you can join the Rett Ride Across America, you can start your own fundraising page. And we hope that you'll watch Casey Byers. Unfortunately, Casey was affected by the hurricane Sarah, but we know he's committed to this ride because he cares passionately about Rett syndrome, and he's going to ride the entire Gulf Coast starting October 3rd. So join us for that. We also have a really cool gala that is going to be a virtual gala on October 24th at 8:00 PM. For $50, you can join the gala, you'll get a wine glass or a mug, you can sit down with your favorite beverage from the comfort of your home, just like you're doing right now. You can fill it with coffee, fill it with whatever you'd like, and participate in a really love, loving, fun, virtual event on October 24th. So, so please join us for that and visit the website to hear how you can participate. My final message before turning things over to Heidi for a little while is about October Rett Syndrome Awareness Month. We are a rare disease, we are a mighty disease, there are over 7,000 rare diseases. And we need to make sure that Rett syndrome is at the table, that people understand our children, that we are doing advocacy in Washington, that we are doing advocacy at the state level with our legislators getting designations for October being Rett Syndrome Awareness Month. And on our website, we have so many resources to help you get Rett syndrome to be known in your community. Nobody cares more than we as parents, but if people don't understand it, they can't help. So if you visit our website, you'll find we have 31 days of facts. We have merchandise that you can wear loud and proud, and you can gift it to people in your life. Temporary tattoos, t-shirts, all kinds of good stuff, as well as events. Okay, so our, our tagline and our hashtag that we hope you use throughout the month of October is #OverPowerRett, hashtag #OverPowerRett. So please add that to all of your things. We're also going to pick one single day to focus on in the month where we will light it up purple. We have many civic buildings, bridges, all kinds of things that are committed to lighting up purple on that day to raise awareness about Rett syndrome, which gets a lot of great media attention. And if you're curious about how you can join in on that and maybe get your state Capitol or your town buildings to light up purple in solidarity, let us know, visit our website, and we can help you make that happen. Okay, all right. So that's a lot of what's going on, a little town hall for ret syndrome.org. What I'd like to do is invite Heidi to come back on camera and give us some updates from our MRA because they too are really active and working on your behalf. So Heidi. I think you're on mute, babe.
Oh, we both did that.
And you can go ahead and take over now.
And you're going to, you're going to go through the slides, right?
I sure will.
Perfect, all right. So there's our beautiful logo for Rocky Mountain Rett. Perfect. All right. So there's our beautiful logo for Rocky Mountain Rett. Is it moving? There we go. So first of all, I just want to go back for a minute. Everything Paige, you were, all that information you were just giving, that is. You guys have so much information on your website that is great for families and some of the stuff I didn't even know was there. So I kind of just want to put that out there too, for everybody to keep, you know, go to retsyndrome.org. We'll try to keep. Posting updates from our, on our website also about things that you guys are doing. So check out both of those. Check out all of our websites. They, there's going to be a lot of information. So Rocky Mountain Rett's history. The biggest part of it is it was founded by families with the help of retsyndrome.org also. So there was a lot of families that, you know, they didn't, they didn't have that one place to go and they knew that that would. Be a really great resource for all the families with Rett and, and other Rett-like syndromes. So they got together and now we have the Rett clinic and it was formed in 2011. Which is really exciting. So, next. Excellent. There we go. So what do we do? So one of the biggest things that we do at Rocky Mountain Rett is. We have to raise a hundred thousand dollars a year to help keep the clinic running. And so that's a big, a big part of what we are is fundraising, but the other really big part is we want to be there for families and we want. You know, I think now that I'm on too, I can be your point person for, if you have any questions about anything, you can ask me. If you want to know, you know, any tricks I've done with Ellie, if you want to know how to find a great speech therapist, if you want to know. You know, about the system getting your CES waiver. That's something I can help you with. And on top of that, there's so many families that have been here before me. I've only been here two years, so I'm still learning a lot about the area and how things work here. But I have like quite a few parents. That I can reach out to and get any answer we need, as well as Tristan. She's great too. So. I feel like we have a really good group of people that we can help you with anything you need. So that is a huge part of Rocky Mountain Rett. And next slide. There we go. So one of our biggest fundraisers is the Mardi Gras event. We've had it a couple of years now. This year, we're pretty sure we won't have it again because of COVID. But one of the, one of the questions I had seen Tim mention real quick. Was how are we going to fundraise without having fundraisers? Well, we are still going to have fundraisers. We're going to do some virtual fundraisers. This will be one of them and we still are getting that in the works right now. We're already starting to plan ahead. One thing with all our fundraisers is really important is for the families to be. Part of it, for the families to help us out with it, be on the committee. Go to the events. And if you can't go to the events, especially one like this, think about any auction items you can help donate. Tell all your friends about it. See if they have any auction items that they think would be really great for it. So it's not just about Rocky Mountain Rett doing it, but. All the families out there are just as much a part of Rocky Mountain Rett and doing these fundraisers as the people on the committees. And us coming up with these ideas. So we want to hear any of your ideas. We want you to help. We, you know. And we're, we'll take anything you have. So that was our big fundraiser is Mardi Gras. And then the next one. It's been Ride for Rett, which is a spin class. And this year it will be Move for Rett. And we're still getting that all together. But that will be a virtual event and basically. You can, kind of the tagline we're using is walk, run, or roll and move. So there'll be more info of that coming, but you can, you know, we'll pick a day and hopefully you can get in so many steps or so many miles. And get all your friends and family to donate and support you doing this. But with Move for Rett, or sorry, Ride for Rett. One of the really cool things that happened here was there's a Rett mom, Dana, who got her entire neighborhood to come to this event. And that's just, you know, another thing we can do as families. To help support Rett syndrome, to help spread the word. So, you know, all those people now know about Rett syndrome and now they want to be involved in Rett syndrome. And how they can help. And then, you know, they tell one friend, tells one friend. So for me, I'm, I'm huge on telling everybody about Rett and trying to get people involved. So. That was, that's a really great thing about this ride or this fundraiser that we did. And we'll do it again as soon as we can all be in a spin class together. But until then, we'll, we're going to do Move for Rett and we'll give you more info on that once we've got that nailed down. So another big thing is we're not just about fundraisers. I mean, we have to fundraise because we have to help the clinic. But we also are here to help you. So, and, and we want the families to get together. We want. All of our families to meet, all of our families to, you know, this mom and me magic, magical makeover and the princess tea party. That's, those were amazing events that you can go and just be yourself. You don't have to worry about anything. Everyone there, we're all living our Rett world. We, you know, nobody cares if. Somebody's having a fit. Nobody cares if, you know, somebody's, you know, not doing what you want them to do or, or whatever. It's like, this is a chance for all the families to get together. Support each other, have the kids meet each other and just have it be a really, really fun event. And we want to have more of those. We want your suggestions. So, you know, a lot of these were closer to the Denver area, but. You know, for those of you in Colorado Springs, if you want to do some kind of event together, you know, talk to us and we'll help figure it out. I have a little. Team of girls, Rett moms down there that are like my go-tos for anything Colorado Springs and they're awesome. And so, you know, maybe they'd want to start some event. Or if you're more in Denver, you know, just call us and let us know. We want to know what you want too, and we want to help make that happen. So. Yeah, just let us know. Next slide then. And there we go. So some other ways to support Rocky Mountain Rett. Like Paige talked about, Rett Syndrome Awareness Month. Yeah, 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 yeah. I know. You're coming up. You're coming up. Rett Syndrome Awareness Month is in October. There's so many things you can do and so many, you know, retsyndrome.org has shirts and the, and the other things they're going to be doing. One thing I did. At Ellie's school was for the last two years, we had Rett Syndrome Awareness Week. And we kind of lucked out because Ellie's birthday is October 22nd. So we did it at the end of October and I went in and talked to all the kids about Rett syndrome in her class. And they then went, sorry, I got eyelash. They went and told all the other kids, the younger kids about Rett syndrome. And so each day, all the kids in her school learned something about Rett syndrome. And then on that Friday, everyone wore purple. And they also did a fundraiser where they had buckets at the front of the school and each class just threw change in and then whoever raised the most. Got a pizza party. And then plus they learned all about Rett syndrome. So, you know, just think of things like that that you can do. Just to, to spread the word during October and every other month. Another thing, another Rett mom and I are going to do is sell t-shirts for that month. So we're going to have a store. It's going to have all kinds of stuff and I'll be sending something out about that also. But, you know, just think about any, you know, even if you're just telling people in the store about Rett syndrome. It's just that, we just want to tell, we want to get the word out. So everybody knows what it is, how they can help and things they can do. Another thing for our website, for the Rocky Mountain Rett website. We want to start a blog of some kind. So we're calling it The Slice of Rett Life. So tell us your story. You know, kind of the good, the bad and the ugly. We all have it. Like the nights, you know, the other night Ellie was up at 3:00 AM, just happy all night, but we were up all night and didn't go back to bed. And, you know, things like that are normal in our lives. And I don't think. A lot of, if you're not living with Rett, you don't know what's going on in our world. You know, people see it from the outside, but they don't know what it's really like. So we want to get those stories out there, you know, how does it feel? To be a sibling of someone with Rett and, you know, what was your story with Rett? You know, what do you do for your kid's birthdays? What do you do at Christmas when? People buy tons of toys and gifts and your daughter can't play with them. You know, I just always tell everyone to buy clothes or donate to, you know, retsyndrome.org or Rocky Mountain Rett. That's like my latest thing. Cause it's easy and people feel like they're helping. But we want to hear from you and we want to feature families and, and, you know, that's a. We really want to push that, you know, it's, it's important for all of us to be in this together and help each other through because it's hard. And, you know, there's, there's funny stuff, there's hard stuff, there's, there's good stuff, you know, and if we can all help each other, it, I mean, it just makes it so much easier. So, and again, connect with us. So if you're not already signed up for the newsletter, you can go. To rockymountainratt.org to sign up there. We also have a Facebook page and a family Facebook page I started. It's called our MRA family. We'd love to have you on there too. And then like Dr. Benke wanted me to talk about his favorite, Risers for Rett. So let's go on to Risers for Rett. Cause that's another very cool part. There, yeah, yep, mhm. Yep. It's very, uh huh, good job. Good part of our fundraising. Are we switching? So I'll just start. The slide will be there in a sec, I'm sure. Oh, the YouTube channel too. We also have YouTube. Okay. So here we go. Risers for Rett. So. This is a really cool organization. It was started by friends of, like a couple of groups of friends. That had a friend, one that had a daughter with Rett syndrome and one that had a daughter with CDKL5. And they wanted to do something to help. And so they started Risers for Rett. And it's, I do not fly fish. I'm probably going to learn how to fly fish. The last time I did. Was in college and I ended up with a lure in my head. So I'm a little fearful, but I'm willing to try again. But we have three big events. There's fall tournament, the spring tournament, and then this year was the first women's tournament and it was great. Jessica ran that. And they had a great time. So another thing with Risers for Rett is they also do auctions. So there's a lot of great auction items with their fundraisers. A lot of fishing, you know, a lot of trips, a lot, you can win a really cool fishing pool, which I don't know what that is, but if you're a fly fisher person, you will know what that is. And there is the, we're going to be, I think you need to sign up for the fall tournament is, or the spring tournament is coming up and there's, you have to sign up. Pretty soon. So that'll be on our website also. But Risers for Rett is a great organization to help raise money for Rocky Mountain Rett. So if you're into fly fishing, definitely get ahold of these guys. They're awesome. And Jessica is a huge part of that also. So you can get ahold of Jessica as well. And other ways. So here's a really easy ways you can support Rocky Mountain Rett. I'll go back to your own fundraiser in a sec, but sign up for Amazon smiles. A percentage goes to Rocky Mountain Rett. I mean, that's so easy to do. Anytime you buy anything on Amazon and. Like me, who's on there far too often. That's a great way to donate, easy. Also, if you work for a company that wants to be a sponsor of an event. So we've had, we have a pretty big sponsor for the Mardi Gras festival or not festival event. But, you know, if you have a company that wants to be part of that also, let us know. We would love that. Also, a lot of companies do matching programs for donations. So if you work for a company that does that. And, you know, you want to donate a hundred bucks to Rocky Mountain Rett, see if your company will match it. That'd be great. In Colorado, you can do donate on Colorado Gives Day, which is December 8th. Or get a King's SuperCard and money goes that way. So back to your own fundraiser. So I've done a lot of fundraisers for Ellie. On her birthday, I tried to do something, you know, for. What was the? During Rett Syndrome Awareness Month, we did something. But, you know, there's so many things you can do. One of my friends, Tanya, for her birthday this year. She had a fundraiser for Rocky Mountain Rett and she raised, raised $600 just through a Facebook fundraiser alone. So it's so easy to do and people want to help and a lot of times people just don't know what to do. So something as simple as that, start a fundraiser for, you know, your child's birthday or, you know, anything and. Or get a group of people together and do like a little barbecue party or a wine tasting party or. You know, you could buy one of these glasses for retsyndrome.org and have your own retsyndrome.org wine glass at your Rocky Mountain Rett fundraising party. How great would that be? So there's all kinds of things you can do. If you want help coming up with ideas, I can help you with that. I can, you know, help you find people if you, you know, whatever. Whatever you need me to do, just always know you can come to me and I'll help you with anything like that. But that's a really easy, those are some really easy ways to help Rocky Mountain Rett. So I think, was that the last slide? I think. Oh, yeah. And bottom line, we're here for you. So there's Ellie. That was Ellie on her first birthday. Oh my gosh, she's so little, so cute. So you can email me at heidi@rmret.org. Like I said, we also have the Facebook, the Facebook group, the family page. And Rocky Mountain Rett on Facebook also. But also, you know, be sure to check out Risers for Rett on Facebook and Instagram as well. So if you're interested in the fly fishing part. So I think that's it for now. Just know that, you know, we, yes, we're about fundraising, but we're also about you guys. So we really want to help and be here for you. And the only way we can help is if you use us. So use us because that's why we're here. And it's really exciting to be part of this.
Thanks, Heidi.
You're welcome.
Oh my gosh. Okay. So I'm going to flip ahead to, to a slide here as we go to QA because. This expression I say to every family and I couldn't mean it more today. You are not alone, as evidenced by the collaboration today between the Rocky Mountain Rett Association, retsyndrome.org. And our wonderful Rett clinic at Children's Hospital Colorado. You are not alone. So I'm going to go back up. We're going to go to QA. I invite everybody to please, if you have any questions, you've got Dr. Benke as a captive audience here on webcam. We're not going to let him turn off until your questions are answered. So go ahead and type things in. We've got one question in the queue right now. Heidi, I'd love to hear your thoughts and then I will weigh in. A little bit after you because this is, this is really a big deal for families. And the question is, what is the best way, in your opinion? To balance home life, therapy, work, school, and other siblings?
Wine. No, I'm joking. I know, I know. Good answer. No. You know, I think for us, it's just, our life, it, it may seem crazy, but it's just so normal. Our son Reese, you know, is younger than Ellie. So all he's ever known is therapies. Going to therapy, being part of therapy. You know, just, and, and us always constantly trying to balance it. I think, you know, we treat. We treat Ellie the same way we treat Reese and we talk to them the same way and. I don't know. It's just like, it's just like scheduling, I think, any other kids, you know? I mean, I will say getting her school schedule, worked in with her therapy schedule, worked in with Reese's online school therapy. Schedule has been a little rough only because it's just too much for my brain right now. But, you know, it is, it's just a balancing act and it's making sure, you know, that we're giving full attention to both kids all the time. That I have like every day, I get on my treadmill for an hour. I make sure I work out every day for at least an hour. And sometimes I'm on my treadmill and Ellie's in front on the couch watching Frozen and Reese is downstairs in front with his friends playing his cars. And it's insane, but I'm able to at least get a little bit of me time in. So it's just, you know, it's, you just have to, I don't know. My best advice is you just have to roll with it and you can't stress out about it. Even though I have plenty of times, but you just have to go, you know what? This is just our life. You've got it under control. You, you know, you just stay on top of it and just like you do if you have. Five typical kids, you know, instead you may just have, you know, you're not taking your kids to soccer practice. You're taking your kid to. Speech therapy. So it's the same kind of thing. And just, you know, you're going to screw up and it's, you're going to feel like a bad mom plenty of times or dad. And then the next day you wake up and you do it again and you do, everything's. And then the next day you wake up and you do it again and you do, everything's great. So I, I guess that's my best advice is you just have to try to have a good attitude. Also have your meltdowns. I've had plenty of meltdowns. Um, but then you just get up and you do it again. So that's my biggest advice for that.
Thanks Heidi. I couldn't agree more. I think that, uh, give yourself grace, right? That is the, the biggest thing is, is don't be hard on yourself. No, none of us are experts. Work-life balance in today's world in 2020 is not easy for anyone. Work-life balance, work-life Rett balance is even harder, but it's not impossible. And I think the best thing that you can do is remember that when you're having a bad moment, it's going to be a bad moment and it will go on. There is going to be peaks and valleys. And if you can keep that strength, you will have more, less stress and more success. And lean on your friends. You've got a community here of people that have gone before you and are here to embrace you and support you during those hard times. And that could be myself, that could be Heidi. And if you're, if you're finding that it is pervasive and it is really your, um, your stress and your struggle is really impacting your ability to get through the day, there's no shame in reaching out for expert help. You can start with Tristan and Dr. Benke at the clinic to say, I can't do this. This is more than I can handle right now. And you can get connected to experts. You can get connected with, um, whether it's any kind of therapeutic psychological help. There is no shame in that. That is a sign of strength to admit that this is more than you can handle. And, um, it might take more than treadmill. It might take more than a healthy diet. It might take more than going to bed early. It has for me at times. We've been doing this for a while. Again, you can move in and out, but ask for help. Don't be alone. Don't struggle through it and think that you just have to tough it out. Um, Dr. Benke, you have seen many, many families in clinic. You have been privy to, uh, many different scenarios. We know families come in all shapes and sizes. We know that some kids live at home. Some families reach a point where they can't keep their child at home. And, um, uh, we don't want there to be any taboos. We want you to be successful. We want your child to be loved in whatever form that needs to take. So that's my advice is the work-life Rett balance comes from giving yourself grace and knowing there are always options. Dr. Benke, from your view of seeing what has made families, um, thrive with Rett syndrome, do you have some advice to share that Heidi and I haven't already?
No, I, I think that that's fairly complete. Um, Paige spent a lot of time in talking about, uh, the communication guidelines. And I think that, um, never underestimate what your daughter, uh, son can tell you. And I think the, the more that that's pushed, the earlier it's pushed, the lifelong ways that it's pushed, I think will enrich your lives as well as, as theirs, um, as, as you go about that process. Because I'm sure that a lot of the frustration comes from, if only they could tell us what's bothering them. And so again, just to, as much time as you can spend on, on the communication issues, I think the better and don't give up.
That's right. Don't ever give up and don't be afraid to ask for help in your home. There, there is support. Get respite. Um, there, there is support for having caregivers come into your home. And that can be a difficult thing to, to give up some of the privacy. There are trade-offs. But to have additional arms and legs in the house to help, especially when you have multiple children, especially when you have to go off to work and you can't take advantage of a regular daycare option or after-school program. Um, explore, go to the resources that are on our website, um, visit the agencies and your case managers and social workers who can help you connect. And, uh, don't be afraid to get outsiders in to help. Some of the most amazing people I've met in this life have come to Rett syndrome. We didn't have a choice in the matter, but there are incredible people who love our kids and want to help you. Don't be afraid. And if the first one doesn't work out, try two or three. You know, this is a marathon. Uh, so, okay. Um, I hope that's some advice that will help. And, uh, again, know that we're here. Okay. We have a comment. Some, some people have commented and they have weighed in and said, yes, taking care of yourself is the most important step in the process. Okay. Um, in closing, we've got a couple of things. Ah, yeah. Somebody wrote it and said, Dr. Benke, none of us chose Rett, but you did. You chose our sons and daughters. Can you tell us a little bit about?
Uh, it's a long story. Um, I, I don't know. I, I think that you chose me as well. It was just, uh, one of those things of how you find your calling in ways that you weren't necessarily looking. Um, I, I think it was the, the second patient that I saw when I moved here to Colorado, I saw him in clinic and I said, I think you have Rett syndrome. And then what that turned into is basically where we're, where we're at now. And it's been a, a great journey. And, uh, I think that it's been my pleasure to take care of, of you and your daughters. And it's just this whole notion of you meet a family and they can't necessarily speak, but they have so much to say. And that's, that's very rewarding.
Thanks, Dr. Benke. I know that's a short answer and, uh, we are so honored to have, have you as part of our honorary Rett family. So thank you. And I know it's been a tough summer for you and I hope that you know that we appreciate you and respect you. And we'll do everything that we can to continue your work and Tristan's work as well. Okay. We are at the end of the hour. Oh, Heidi, we have a quick question for you. Um, someone's asking about the T-shirt store.
Oh, the T-shirt store. Um, well, it's not ready yet. Uh, but like I said before, another Rett mom and I are going to be doing that. Um, we're getting it all together right now. Um, I've designed some shirts. So there'll be, um, actually I should say logo, because I think in the store, you're going to be able to get T-shirts, sweatshirts, baseball hats. Um, still need to look and see other product we can do. We'll have a different, a couple of different designs. Uh, and then all the money that we raise from that is going to go to Rocky Mountain Rett and retsyndrome.org. So we wanted to split between the two, um, to help that way. Um, and I'm hoping to be able to spread it out throughout the entire Rett community and like post it on the Rett family page as well. So we can get a lot of people in these shirts, because, um, they're, they're going to be inspirational. I'll say that. So, um, I have a shirt I got a few years ago from another Rett family that did a T-shirt sale. And it's like, it's my T-shirt. I wear it all the time. I try to wear it anytime we go to the clinic. Um, it's kind of like my go-to and I feel like I see people looking at it, like trying to figure it out. And, uh, so I'll always say, oh, Rett syndrome. Do you know what Rett syndrome is? And then I tell people. I tell so many people about Rett syndrome. So I think, you know, it's something, oh, uh, it's something that, uh, I like to talk about, because I think it's important for everybody to know. So the more T-shirts we can all have out there, the better and wine glasses.
Definitely. Merchandise is a great conversation starter. So wear, wear your team colors, be proud. Visit our MRA store and visit the retsyndrome.org store. We have a lot of, uh, hats, T-shirts, uh, coffee mugs, all kinds of things that, um, can, and they make great gift items as the holidays are coming up. Feel free to, uh, share. Uh, okay. So thank you, Heidi. Uh, we're at, we're at the end of our time together today for our town hall. I hope that you feel reconnected. I hope you feel a sense of relief that things are continuing. Nothing has stopped. It's happening a little differently. Might be happening at a different pace, but things are continuing to move forward. We have a lot of things that we are really proud to have brought to you, for you, on behalf of you, because of your support. So please stay engaged. Um, just because we're closing the town hall right now, doesn't mean that we're going away. The clinic is there for you. Heidi's there for you. I'm here for you. Everyone at retsyndrome.org is here for you. Each and every day, we're thinking about you and your children. You are not alone. You can, uh, continue to submit your questions to us. We're here for you. We have lots of events coming up that, uh, hopefully will be in person again, but enjoy the virtualness, because right now you can attend it with your bunny slippers on and no judgments, uh, will happen. And in a day or two, you will get a link to today's town hall. Please share it with those who, um, weren't able to be with us today. That might benefit for the information. Again, thank you, Dr. Benke. Thank you, Tristan. Thank you, Heidi. Have a great weekend, everybody. Be well. Wash your hands, wear a mask. We want to get our kids back in school. Um, join us for our upcoming events. Risers for Rett, right on. Okay. We'll see you all soon. Thank you for being with us today. That ends our town hall.
Bye.
Bye-bye.